To read, I will be running the meeting today because Chair Willie is out of town and joining us. It's a little bit easier to run the meeting in the building. We are here for our 4:00 PM work session. And as a reminder for anybody who's listening or might watch this later, we do not take any public comment or have any action items associated with our work sessions. It's for informational purposes only and for opportunity for the commission to have discussion. Folks are welcome to provide public comment at our 5:30 business meeting if you wish to do that, which will start shortly after we wrap this one. And with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to introduce who's here with us today.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Jeff Lang with Trainer HL Architects to run us through the update on the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center design process. Jeff?
I don't like to stand up there and present, but I can if you'd like. Well, thank you for having us again. I know that we've continued to come and give you updates as we've kind of gone along and moved this project forward here over the last few months and wanted to come back as we talked last time about the idea of being able to look at where are we going to go, how do we get there, and what's that look like within a budget that makes a heck of a whole lot of sense? So those are things that we've really spent a lot of time on, is honing in on a concept that does a couple different things that I'm going to share today and fits within a reasonable budget that I think as we outline it, you'll see kind of how that starts to come together. It was just working. See, this is what I'm telling you. All right. So I want to go back through some diagrams. Oh, thank you. I usually don't have these problems, Sarah. I'm sorry about that today. So we'll go back through some program diagrams, looking at both the courthouse at the JLE and then as well as a Sheriff's Operations piece out at the jail. And then I'll talk about some next steps pieces as it relates to the project itself. You've seen the program, but I wanted to pull it back up here again just to re-highlight kind of where we're going and what we're trying to get accomplished. Nothing's changed, but again, it's just a reminder that we are planning in this early stage here in the first portion of it to be able to have those 10 courtrooms, 11 departments, and look at a plan that tries to get us to that 10-year window at the end of the day. But we're still looking at it as a master plan element. So everything that we're doing here, although it may not fit the 20-year need, gives you the ability to move to the 20-year need whenever you so choose. So we're not locking you into some things. We're actually looking at it from a perspective of what do we do today that makes sense that you don't have to go redo tomorrow if you choose to begin the 20-year plan? Last time I was here, I showed you a little model. We're going to bring that back the next go around, but you saw again that kind of four-story addition that we had. It's about a 58 to 62 square foot total addition to the existing building. So we are planning to do that. We've got secure parking that we're planning for staff. That will be limited from the standpoint of how many parking stalls we have, and we'll circle up and make sure we understand what that need is to accommodate the needs for this project. The idea behind that is the east parking lot that is currently there, we will screen and provide access control to that for secure parking. So we'll become not just a parking lot, but a true secure parking area. We also are looking at and will incorporate a secure holding entry and then the overall growth for the master plan within our options. So here on the lower level, I won't walk you through a whole lot of it from the standpoint of everything that's here. What I do want to hit is some highlights. So we have taken court services that was on the south side of the building and moved them to the north side of the building, capturing natural daylighting and also allowing for growth in the future. So part of the conversation we had with that group and as we looked at it, those things are missing, the natural daylighting and the growth. So that allows for those things to happen there. Plus, we are removing the courtrooms in those spaces, so logically it makes some sense to do that at this time. Trustee and clerk area there on the, let's see, that's the west side, will remain as is. And then in the addition, we've got the court holding, which is in the pink, some additional mechanical, and then just some building support spaces. So we've got to capture in how we get folks in and out of that space, but that is where we're planning court holding. It really works well because it allows us to provide the secure inmate movement that we talked about, all on that section. And then as well as it moves a tad bit to the north within the building, the existing building, to capture that other elevator. So we're not trying to go with secure circulation throughout the building itself. The other thing we are looking at here is some joint shared staff on that north side as well. So one of the things we talked about early on was the ability to have some shared break space and those types of things down in that lower level or on floors. So that is part of what we had accomplished there as well. And then on the main level, we're going to enhance the existing entry. So part of what we've looked at here is the idea that even though we thought about and tested a few new entry pieces as we looked at budget, as we looked at how people are coming to the building, how it connects to your historic courts, it just made a heck of a whole lot of sense to make sure that we keep that there, but enhance it so that not just wayfinding, but also make it an entry so people know that's the entry. So we're going to work towards that through our design phase. We've got the Law Library and Help Center. We've got the clerk space and the administration space. So again, we looked at that north portion because we are capturing new courtrooms in the addition that those made logical sense to go and renovate because those spaces get unoccupied at the end of the day. Sarah? Oh, I thought you were going to ask a question. You were getting close.
Well, what I was going to just, I was going to wait until you finished. Do you have other things you want to?
I will, but you go ahead.
Okay. I just, what I want to call out on each of these slides is on this level, there are three juried courtrooms and a non-juried courtroom on this level.
Correct. And we are showing, this one also shows a jury-capable courtroom in the existing building. So that gets you where we're trying to go at the end of the day. So although the tower portion or the addition piece will be consistent all the way up, we are adding an additional courtroom here on this main level. Then on the second floor, we are looking at Sheriff's Office staying as is, with a portion of that that's on the south side that he occupies as being renovated for DA space. And then jury, or sorry, not jury, judges and their staff would then be on the east side in a more collegial type of an office space. This really made a lot of sense when we start to move dispatch out and EOC out, emergency management out. All those folks get moved out. This made sense, again, to use space that's already being unoccupied to then occupy. So we're not trying to capture space and relocate folks, just to relocate folks. We're really trying to be strategic about it, and then that will allow for the future. So what happens here on this floor at the 20-year plan is the sheriff would then move out. The judges would then occupy that space on the north side, and that would be all office space. And then we would capture two courtrooms there to get you to the 12 courtroom idea for the 20 years within that space. So it captures where the elevator is. It works with the rest of the courtrooms that we have. So that's kind of the idea behind it. So again, trying to maximize the use of what we can, but then not try to just put people in places where they don't need to be. So this also then adds a third level for the other portion of the court space in the addition. We are not currently showing any add-on to the existing building at this time. So through the 20-year plan, in our opinion, we believe you can, with the addition and then with the relocation of other staff pieces that we've talked about, you'd be able to capture everything within your 20 plan within the existing building. So that's kind of where we're at today as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish. Does that make some sense? Excellent. So then on the Sheriff's Ops portion of the building, this would be a new building that would go out by the jail. This has dispatch, emergency management, sheriff's portion there on the lower level. We are anticipating this as a two-story building. I think here over the next 30 to 60 days, we'll be able to determine some things as it relates to how much of it do we build from the standpoint of do we build and shell or do we build just a portion with the ability to go add on to it later down the road? So those are cost items that we'll be able to come back to at a later date, once we kind of really fine-tune and finish up schematic design. So then on the upper portion of this is where I was talking about the idea of being able to have a portion that Sheriff's Office and then a shelled portion that may be shelled, like I said, or that may be something that's just not built, depending on where we are at the end of the day from a cost perspective. Does this make sense on what we're trying to do here as well? There is some limited additional parking that we'd be adding, as well as some additional site work for the staff to come to this facility. We are looking at a connection in our mind, being able to provide some connection for staff from the jail to the building made some sense. On the same hand, we recognize what budget means, and so that is an item that we'll talk through as we continue to design. So what everybody's been waiting for at the end of the day. So we spent some really good time together, both our team and J. E. Dunn, to really kind of outline what the buckets of dollars are. So the idea here is to really allocate dollars to the areas that we know we've got to accomplish to get to a number that I think makes some sense. So I'll walk through kind of what we're trying to do and how we get there. So as I shared with you, the addition and kind of what that square footage looked like if you looked at some of the numbers we had, we had about 14,000 square feet or so per floor. So we're under the 60,000 square feet. So we are planning to be about, well under that number. So that's why we used the 59 for now with a cost per square foot that J. E. Dunn and I have worked through. So that gets you to about a $36.8 million addition. The site improvements would include any, the parking secure piece, any parking area that we remove, some utility pieces, those types of things. And then at the new entry, if there's any new site pieces that we need to capture there, add a $3.2 million option or $3.2 million cost. And then the renovation piece. So what we've targeted here is about 25,000 square feet or so. And as we've chalked here, both J. E. Dunn and Trainer have talked, we know that number may be plus or minus from that based on what we're going to do. So we took a target number with the idea that we know we're going to do, the bulk of it's going to be office space, and there's a little bit of court space, but most of it's office space. So what does that really look like at the end of the day? And we need to really fine-tune that to come back and be able to say we can do more or we have to do less based on what we're trying to accomplish. I'm comfortable with where we're at because I believe that this allows us to have some flexibility, and I think that we can do more than what we're showing. So I'm conservative today. I'm not a, again, I don't want to be your low bidder today. As for the Sheriff's Operations Building, that's a 20,000 square foot to 25,000 square foot. Again, that's the idea of being pretty close to where that is. That gets us to dispatch, emergency management, and some sheriff's office in that space. And that gets you pretty close to the 20-year window for dispatch and emergency management. And then sheriff would have the ability to grow into that space and grow out for future use down the road. And then the site improvements, a lump sum that we've talked about in our, as a team, to be able to identify, again, some utilities that have to come to that site, some limited parking space, earthwork, those types of things to be able to capture that. So that gets us to about a $57.5 million total from those numbers. So then we took some industry standard pieces as it relates to design contingency and owner contingency, design contingency at 8% and owner contingency at 5%. So let me talk a little bit about what that means. Most of you probably already know this, but I like to share it because I think it's good to have the conversation. So design contingency is not for us. Everybody likes to say, oh, this is great. So when Jeff doesn't have his thing in there that he's supposed to have, he can have some design contingencies. That's not the case. This is really for as we design the project. So on bid day, when bid day's done, that percentage is zero. So that's, that dollar is to use for within the project as we design the project. So if we determine we can get some more square footage based on what we're trying to accomplish, then that design contingency gets reduced. If there's things that we find as we open up the building and look at what we're trying to accomplish as we design the building, then again, that allows us to be able to capture those things so that we're not sitting here coming back and saying, hey, by the way, we're not at a $74 million project, we're at an $80 million project. So those are some, just some pieces we like to carry. The owner contingency, we like to reduce that down as the project is designed and get to about a 3% window. I'm not sure I'm really comfortable to talk about that from a perspective of this project yet, of whether we reduce it or not. And the reason is, is because we are doing an addition, and we also have renovation work. I'm not as worried about what's going to happen out at the jail, but I am concerned about some things we may find as we dig our new lower level, as we open up walls, those types of things. So we want to make sure you're covered at the end of the day for the unforeseen that may be seen within the building as we get construction started. So that's a number for that. That doesn't get reduced unless you choose to reduce it, but that is, again, to hold for some unforeseen and things along those lines.
If I could add to that a little bit, Jeff, you know, I think it is also, you know, to sort of underline, it's reflective of where we are in the design process. We're very early on in the design process. No one should walk away from this meeting. Nothing, well, let me say it a different way. Nothing on this slides in terms of placement of particular colored squares are solid at this point. We've got a lot of work to do in this space. So having a larger owner's contingency is also important as to what this team finds along the way. I've done capital projects for about 20 years now, and I can tell you, everyone always thinks their owner's contingency and design contingency is too high at this stage of the game. And by the time we get to a guaranteed maximum price and by the end of the project, we're going to be glad we had it. We oftentimes find things that were just not anticipated, and there was no way it could be anticipated in the design process. And also things that just make sense to do now while we have things under, you know, tore up and uncovered. So I know those numbers look big right now, but they're going to look a lot smaller as we go through this process.
Thank you, Sarah. So with that, then, we get a total construction cost of $65.2 million. So then we allocated about 14% for soft costs, and those are items we're actually working with Jay and J. E. Dunn and myself to work through a matrix. So the idea is to be able to share that with Sarah here in the next 30 days or so to be able to say, what's that look like? So big picture, though, I would tell you, the, one of the items that I would tell you is kind of the bigger number is FF and E, so furniture, fixtures, and equipment. If it's in the courtroom, other than the movable chairs that you and I would sit in, it's part of the construction, but the movable chairs aren't. So those are things that we are going to capture, but there are some other furniture items that maybe, that we look at and want to incorporate within the project. So that's, I think, one of the bigger ticket items that I would share that fits within that number. And we've talked about a percentage that we can share as we kind of work through the process. And one of the things is vetting out what's good now, what you've already spent dollars on that makes some sense. You've got a furniture company that you've worked with over the years, so a lot of that stuff is very, very good. So is there really a need to actually purchase new furniture other than for new office spaces or new areas? So those are things we want to make sure we vet out before we just throw a number out there and make it happen. So this does give you some good padding on the soft costs. It also includes the survey that Jay's already going and getting, Geotech Services. We're also going to have an environmental Phase 1 done on the site itself, just because of the generator and some of the other things that are around it. And because it's been here since 1970, we just would like to be able to know what's there so we can try to mitigate some of the unforeseen within the project. Questions on this portion of the presentation today?
I have some questions.
Excellent.
Okay. So one of them would be, so we're calling this the Sheriff's Operations Building, but it's 911 dispatch and emergency management that are going to be moving in there at this time. Are there sheriff's operations that are planned to move at this phase?
Yes, there are some sheriff spaces within this building as well. Let me go back. So here on the main level, Commissioner, in the orange color, that would all be sheriff space. And then on the first level, we've got some sheriff space. And part of that is some potentially evidence storage and then also some sheriff's operation space that would be from the building, from the existing courthouse building that would come out to this space. And the reason is, is because if you go back to this level here, the sheriff does have some office space as well as evidence storage there to the south, where we're looking at expanding the DA space. So as you can see, if we're going to do those types of things, they need to have some space out at the new operations building.
Thanks. I wanted some clarity on which pieces were moving out there other than 911 and emergency management. In your costs there, either with the, if you can put back to the cost sheet, there we go, either in the site renovations or in the soft costs, does that include moving the communications tower and some other infrastructure like that that would support 911?
So let me try to answer part of that question, and then Jay's going to answer the rest of it, because I know he's been doing some legwork on this. So the current tower and everything that's here currently is being taken care of before we even get started. We also recognize and have talked a little bit with Tony that there are some new equipment that may be showing up in the near future. And so we're trying to time out what that looks like, to be able to take that out, directly out to that space when we're done, in lieu of moving it into this space and then having to move it back out. And Jay, I don't know if you had some other things to say on that item?
Everything that Jeff is saying is correct. Ideally, the move for, of ECC wants is ideal in terms of moving that new equipment in and realizing the savings of not doing it twice, because that's a big FF and E piece. The existing tower that is here now, we really only have one vendor left on that tower, and they've been notified that the tower will be coming down. We're still debating and working with ECC and Tony Foster to determine what the best way for that tower to come down. Either we will retain it or potentially sell the tower off and be done with it.
But we're not the vendor on that tower. I think a lot of people assume that that tower dispatches 911 calls. It does not.
Correct. It does not. All the ECC equipment is on the actual JLE building right now, so.
Thank you. That's all very helpful.
Jeff, I'd be interested to hear the conversation that went into the non-juried courtrooms. That was a big conversation early on. Can you give us a little bit of a window into that?
Yeah. So in part of what, and I know we've got a great group here today of folks that are very, very interested. So part of what we've tried to do here is capture the idea of what we've talked about in our programming. And so through our programming stages, we talked about trying to get to eight jury-capable courtrooms, two hearing rooms within the future to be either jury-capable or hearing. By working through the design phase and the process that we've got currently to date to get to where we need to be from both a budget perspective as well as a space perspective, we've got seven jury-capable courtrooms and then three hearing rooms. We can, and we're going to work through this with the judges. We may come back at the next go around when we're done with our schematic design with a way to get eight jury-capable courtrooms and two hearing rooms. But for now, with the space that we've got and how we're trying to do security and we're trying to handle staff circulation, it really lends itself to a seven and three scenario. So we do plan, and we'll have continuous meetings with the judges to work through the design, the rest of the design of this. But this was really, for us, a quick, down-to-dirty idea of trying to get there and get to the program as best we could within a budget that made some sense.
While you contemplate your next question, Commissioner Kelly, maybe. I'm curious. I think you might have, you said a little bit about it before, but I think I just missed it because I was typing notes about the thing you had said before. You mentioned some specifications around the entry and enhancing the entry. Can you talk a little bit more about what that vision is and sort of the purpose or conversations that led to highlighting that specifically?
I think one of the things that we've realized is, and when you go over to the facility, first off, where is entry? When the new addition was put on in 2000 or so, 2000, 2001, it's not that the entry went away, but the idea of entry somewhat was hidden. And I think people still try to go to the south portion to find how to get into the building. So we want to be able to look at the entry itself to be able to actually capture that, whether that's extending the glass out and creating a little bit more space there for security, whether that's some wayfinding pieces that we try to capture within the site as well as the building itself. To be able to do those types of things, we also, let me back up on the site. One of the other things that we talked a little bit about on this one as well is, she says I have a cool button I can put here. Let me see if I can do this. The other thing is, is to think about accessibility, and is there an ability to actually capture some kind of a space there that would be a drop-off space or accessibility space? And so those are things that when we think about that entry and really enhancing that entry, that's what we're talking about at the end of the day, not trying to do something that's going to be elaborate or anything along those lines, but something that starts to really capture what entry is. And then the other thing is, is right now you only have one lane of security. So if I'm coming and you got attorneys coming or you got staff coming, it's, everybody lines up and goes. So we want to be able to look at that in a more broader sense to be able to see how we can capture two lanes. So you could have actually a staff lane in the morning, in the early morning. So if they have a card or a badge, they can swipe that or they can show that and they can go through that lane. They still get scanned from the magnetometer standpoint, and so if it buzzes, they step aside. But it allows for those staff and others to be able to move through rather quickly, whereas you then can spend the time on the public individuals that are working through or jurors that are coming in. So it helps alleviate some of that. So those are the things that we want to be able to try to capture in that space.
Thank you. That's helpful. You kind of anticipated my next question, which was, how would that impact what security would look like? And I mean, it's definitely a bottleneck for the, like, the breadth and size of that building. It's a pretty narrow entry point, I would say. And I'm glad to also hear you talking about the entry as it extends to the public walkways and the street and the accessibility of how someone gets dropped off at or walks to the courthouse. And I was curious, it didn't seem like it from any of the boxes as they are for now. There will not be any entrance to the south portion. Is that correct? We are not increasing entry points. We're just going to maintain one and try and enhance the visibility and accessibility of that.
Correct. The only thing that we will add, and we're going to look at, since we're going to secure this parking area here, we will have a staff entry that happens here for those folks that park. But we are a proponent, and the way we're working the design is there's one entry to this building. Do we have exits out of it? Sure, we need that from a code perspective, but an entry space, there's one.
So to that point, I was curious if the current south door that is used by staff, will something like that still be available outside of that secured parking? Since you mentioned that's a limited number of stalls, it's obviously not going to be able to account for all of the staff that would have access to that secured entry point.
Right. So I think that's a fundamental discussion that we can have here over the next few months. Part of what I would share with you is, as a court designer and planner, I would tell you that everybody, unless they're going to a secure parking area, no matter if you're public or staff, should be coming through the same entry. Every new courthouse that's being designed or even renovated, that's where you want that to happen. I know there is some discussion about that with our group. We had that through the initial study phase. I think most folks are pretty open to the idea and understand what we're trying to get accomplished. There are going to be some areas, you know, court services, where we're court services, where we're moving them does allow them to have some, an access point if so chose. And I know that they've got some concerns from just the safety, security piece. So those are things we'll talk through, through the rest of the design.
Got it. Thank you.
One thing I want to add while we're talking about accessibility of the building, and I, I know this is not, this is not a part of what Trainer and Jay Dunn have studied at this point, but it's something that Jay and I have talked about around parking around the building. You know, we are losing some parking spaces as a result of this. And I've, I've been concerned about the accessibility of the front of the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center. Those ramps are pretty steep in some cases. And so I do think we need to be thinking about that. I think it's something that Jay and I like to continue to explore that I think is probably going to have to live outside this project. But could we change, is there a possibility of adding parking in between the historic courthouse and the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center that could improve making it a little more accessible to that entryway?
Change the grade.
Yeah, change the grade. I, I do want to take a minute. I know what commissioners are thinking about things. And, and I also haven't cleared this comment with Jeff, so he might disagree with me. But I mean, I think there was, there were some real sacrifices, I think, made in this project to get us where we need to be from a dollar amount perspective. And that is reflective of the commission's desire and strong direction to us to stay within the funds that we have available for this project and to be, to, to use the cash we have on hand and the existing authority that we have on hand so that this project does not require a tax increase to proceed. There are some pieces of this building that are not going to get really renovated or touched. We might be able to do a few things through our maintenance budget. I, I see a reflection of that, Jeff, in the first floor, the main entryway. The DA stays in that space longer. The DA is not on one floor in this. And that was, that was a goal we tried to get to in this project. We're not meeting that goal because it would require more renovation. The clerk is still in the, in the lower level. I, we all agree, we'd like to have the clerk on the main level. It's difficult at this point to make some of that happen. I do think hopefully through design, we can find some ways to make those things happen. But that comes from a very strong desire to keep this project inside the financial flexibility that we have. And I, I don't know if there's more you want to say about that, Jeff?
No, I agree. I think you, you as a commissioner have made it loud and clear to us as designers and, and contractor. We, we have a, we have a dollar amount that we want to try to participate in and engage in. And, and then we want to do, we want to do a project that's successful, that lays out the ability to, to meet a 20-year plan. And there's certain things that are important to us, and it goes back to the conversation we had, priority number one, we want circulation solved. And then we, we want to enhance and engage the court component within our, within Douglas County. And I think that's what we've been able to do here. Although we've moved some pieces and parts around and we're going to go and, and provide an additional building out at the jail, we're doing, I think, and hitting the priorities that were top of mind through the study. So Sarah, I totally agree with you. And I know the, that we'll work our hardest to, to try to capture the best bang for our buck and do it the right way.
I appreciate that narrative, you know, and just letting us know that as we set boundaries and objectives, that there may be losses along that way. So thanks for reframing that for us. If you can go back, Jeff?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding this design and how it's different. This looks like it extends into the parking lot less space. Is that correct? Okay. So we preserve some parking spaces with this design. Okay. And then Sarah and Jay, as, as you're thinking about, you know, maybe changes to the parking and getting a grade, has there been any discussion about the parking that's south of the historic courthouse? Does that need to stay? Or, or is that an opportunity?
That would be part of this whole conversation. To the south and east of the historic courthouse is part of what Jay and I have been talking through.
Okay.
And we'll, obviously, we'll be working with the design team and the construction team.
I, I'm not an architect, but it just, or a traffic planner either. But there seems to be some options with, you know, just traffic flow. There's some space there. I mean, I think.
It's going to be awkward.
Certainly, we love that green space between the two buildings. It's a nice space. And so that feels like a loss, but I wonder if there's other opportunities to gain some green space back attached to that park or in some way. I don't really know. I don't, I'm not designing this. So.
Can I jump in?
Please.
So I, thank you. I, I very much appreciate that we're not getting everything out of this project, but that I very much agree with Sarah. We're, we're meeting the main goals we set out to meet, the ones that are most important to me, I think are being met. I recognize that not everybody's going to get what they wanted out of this design. But that fiscal responsibility was, was a very, very high priority for me. I really like seeing that the next expansion or the next phases are planned for. I think that's part of any great design. And I, I really liked seeing the, I know this isn't detailed exactly yet, but that kind of knowing where roughly things would work for that next phase, which could be, you know, additional jury courtrooms, additional space moving into where the sheriff's office was, and even the, the addition that could go over the, the whole of the existing building. So I think there's some really great pieces here. I love where we're getting to. I think we're getting, in my mind, a lot more for our dollars than we were with some of the early designs. So I think this is a, a great progress.
I would say too, I, I think this challenge is, we made the design team and the construction team's job much harder. This is three buildings, really. And, and I have pushed them to stay on schedule. So that is, it's going to be a real challenge to make this happen. And I don't know if, I mean, Jeff, is there a little bit you feel comfortable talking about in terms of timeline and schedule, in terms of how buildings would come up and out of the ground and so forth?
Let me, well, you know, I try. I try sometimes, Commissioner. So what I've put, what we've put together, and this is in collaboration with Jay Dunn as well, so this isn't just us in a box. And actually, we've talked with Jay as well and Sarah to, to make sure that what we're, I did not bring it for the screen, sorry, Jay. Would you like me to take a photograph, send it to you, email it to her?
Commissioner Willie, we're trying to get this chart to you somehow.
I did not put it in the, in the presentation. I was, we were pulling it together here the last, today, and I wanted to just talk through it.
Yeah, if you can email it to me, I can pull it up.
Excellent. I think Sarah's getting it to you here in a minute. While she's doing that, I'll walk through kind of the high level of it. So we are planning still to wrap up schematic design here at the end of March. With that, I will tell you that we already have a meeting planned with the city on the 28th of February to begin the process both for planning as well as for just the overall process for permitting for both project or both, both areas. So we'll be working through that with them on the 28th and then beginning that process. Through that process, we will then have opportunities to meet with the HRC as well as other groups through the next 30 to 60 days as well. So all of that will happen here over the next 60 days. We will then begin into design development. And through design development, we will wrap up that here at the end of October or June, sorry, at the end of June. We'll wrap up design development at the end of June. Design development will really be, at that point, our team actually making sure all the systems work, making sure that they're coordinated and everything along those lines. At that point, we will then move into construction document phase. We are actually running all of these projects together. So all three, we aren't considering it three projects. We're considering it one, and we've got a full team working on that collectively. So we are moving those all through to get them completed at the, at the same time from a document perspective. So that Jay Dunn can then price that entire, those entire packages together and be able to provide you with a full GMP there by the end of November, first part of December. So that is the, that's the goal, that's the schedule, and that's where we're, that's the, the track we're on, and we feel pretty comfortable about where we are today. Does that help? On schedule?
Commissioner Willie, do you have any further questions? Jeff, I mean, just shop, stop sharing the screen if there's nothing else to go back to, just so we can see Commissioner Willie.
Thanks. To Sarah's point about this being multiple buildings that we're processing at the same time, I just want to remind folks that we took two buildings off of the table entirely that were part of all of the original suggestions, the, the four different design options that we had. So we, we're not doing the, the Mass Street, the old church, and we're not doing anything with the New Hampshire Street property. So this accomplishes many of the things we set out to do in the whole scope of things, but they are, there could have been more buildings on this process, and we have narrowed it down to just the ones that we actually need.
Any other questions from you, Commissioner Kelly? I don't have any other questions at this time either. Appreciate the update and, you know, we'll echo fellow commissioners' comments earlier that this is a, a more intentional option, which makes sense because we're deeper into the process. And you really took the feedback that you heard from us and the boundaries that we set around what was appropriate and reasonable and necessary and what was not. So I appreciate that and being able to have a clearer picture of the big concepts with the knowledge that there will be plenty of details that, that change and can shift along the way, but that this step is important for us to be able to, to lock in a maximum number, know what this will cost the county and plan accordingly.
Jeff, when do you think you'll be back before this body?
So what I'd like to be able to do is wrap up schematic design here, like I said, at the end of March. I'd like Jay Dunn and our teams to work together to put cost to that package that we'll finalize out. So I would like to be back here in 60 days to kind of tell you where that is, show you some, some real fun stuff, some design work that we've done, as well as a cost piece that aligns with what we just talked about. And be able, there, there may be some hard decisions that are made at that, or we're going to have to make, or they may have already been made by others. We'll, but we'll be able to talk through that. I will, I do want to say this because I, I know that sometimes in design processes, we get lost a little bit. And we have not lost the users. Now that we know where we're going, we're going to hit intense meetings with them over the next 30 days to really fine tune those spaces, those areas, make sure they're on board with what we're trying to accomplish, vet out some of the conversations that I know they've had, both with us as well as with, with you guys, to make sure that when we come back here at schematic design, we have a full intended project that makes some sense. They've had their input that they want to be able to have. And then they'll have input throughout the rest of the project as well, as you will as, as well as Commissioner. So, but I, I want everybody to know that we are going to be very intentional and intense here over the next 30 days to meet with each of the departments. Not that all the decisions need to be made, but we want their involvement and engagement within the project to make sure that this is successful.
Great. Thanks for that update. Anything else from you, Commissioner Willie?
No, I'm satisfied.
Great. Thank you. Anything else to add, Sarah? All right. With that, we are adjourned until our 5:30 business meeting. Thanks, everybody.